To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start. I want to remind everyone if you're speaking, speak right into the microphone. We have members at home as well as on the call right now. The only way they will hear you is really put that microphone right up to your face. So I encourage you to do that today. All right, first I'd like to welcome some visitors. I know that this is our first meeting back since, I think, November and we're kind of slowly opening back up again. So we've limited the number of visitors for these meetings, but I do want to welcome Mike Tredwell is here. He is the chief executive officer at Operation Oswego County and the, or at the IDA. And Ellen Hulse, the president of Operation Oswego County is here as well. I know Gary Tove, the fourth president of the IDA, is also on the phone call. So I want to welcome you all here today. Let's jump right into the approval of minutes. How's the promotion? Morris, thank you. Do you have a second? Paul, thank you. Any discussion about the minutes of the November meetings? I'll look for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Jump right into the questions of the day. First one is EP1, Resolution Authorizing a Budget Modification to Department of Development, Tourism and Planning for the Snowmobile Trail Grant. And this is an annual pass through money that we get to pass through to our local clubs. I'll give you a motion for discussion. Mary Ellen, thank you. Do you have a second? Morris, thank you. Dave, is there anything you want to speak to this? I know this is the annual recurring pass through money that goes to our clubs. The only thing I wondered is, why does it come in so late in the year compared to the season to us know where it comes? Is that just how it works with the budget?
That's, excuse me, that's just how it works in New York State right now. Last year, the money was very, very late. And this year, while this, normally we would have got this money in a best case scenario at the end of December, in a typical case, like mid-January. So they're not too far behind for this year where last year, the clubs waited a really long time to get paid. So this is better, this is way better than 2020. Hopefully, our matching funds money for tourism promotion will show a similar schedule. Last year, we didn't get the full allotment and we got that very late. So maybe this is a good sign actually that they're starting to get back on track.
Thanks, Dave. Any other discussion on snowmobile clubs? Again, there's ten clubs. We've funded them for forty years, I think. This is pass through buddies of the state. Do you have a statement? I'll look for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution EP2, Resolution Authorizing the Chairman to Execute an Authorized Agency Agreement with Operation Oswego County. They are a partner for economic development and business development in the county. I'll look for a motion to discuss. Ed, thank you. Do you have a second? Morris, Mary Ellen, thank you. All right, this is a revision to the contract. We have a recommendation of our county attorney. We're adding some language to all of our authorized agency contracts. One of them is for a sexual harassment requirement for the groups to show proof that they have satisfied that. Another has to do with the money that are being paid pass through the salaries. Again, this is the first day contracts that we're going to be changing for this language and all of our contracts are going to probably include all of these. So any discussions or questions on this contract? All right, would anyone else like to speak to this who is here today? Mr. Tredwell? Would you like to speak right into that microphone?
With or without my mask?
No.
Okay. Mike Tredwell, Executive Director of Operation Oswego County. I'm here to support the resolution that is being presented relative to Operation Oswego County. The stipulations and the requirements in that agreement or that contract are things that we currently are already doing with the exception of maybe one. But we are doing that, the salary issue, we're doing that with the SBA, we're doing it with the ABO. So it's already been reported, but it never was required to be reported previously. So just to let you know, we're good with the agreement as drafted and look forward to working with the county moving forward with economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Tredwell. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Not a question, just a comment. I want to echo what Mike Tredwell just said, and I want to thank you for bringing me in the loop as the president of the board in advance so that we knew what was happening and so that we can be prepared to continue to work together with the county legislature. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you for being here. Mr. Tredwell? Morris, if you could speak into the microphone.
That's all right. Many years, I've been here, twenty-one exactly, working with Operation Oswego County and the IDA. There's a great group of people doing a great job. I've watched many projects, many industrial and businesses take place and so on. I think people in Oswego County are very fortunate. We have an active agency that's doing some great job. I mean, I've seen it in all phases. Of course, with the port, the climate issues we have here, it enhances so much of our ability. And of course, the Dusty Sike, which happened in my tenure, which was made, for that, for a million, he did a million bucks and they took away five hundred thousand and knocked it down and destroyed it. This, this kind of stuff is going on here in this county, and I can only say one thing. The organization they have is a great group of people trying real hard, and I certainly support them.
Thank you, Morris. Hey, good.
Yeah, and I've been fortunate to be with the Operation Oswego County. And let's see, first team project is involved by, I'll keep reading it. In addition to that, it is so discouraging to me, the agency, very believe it, has worked so hard and they've been proactive looking for this, I mean, this is a secret. I mean, that's what's made public, I mean, shopping.
Okay, then I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Please, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. Let's jump over to some reports. And again, we are kind of streamlining these meetings just as we start to get back up again. So the updates, I think, are being provided, which we appreciate. Dave, do you want to highlight just a couple of quick things that you have from your office? It's been a little while since we've seen each other.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It has been a while since we've met, and I'm happy to see all of you again. I'll start with the two pieces of paper that I gave you. The one that has Jefferson County at the top, that is just a sample of some language off their website because they have been involved in a broadband accessibility and availability study along with Lewis County, and they're, and we are undergoing one now as well. They're a little bit further ahead of us, but I printed this out for you because the next step in our process is going to be really diving down deep in, at the household level. We're working with the Central York Regional Planning Board, cares money that they have, and a firm that they've hired to do each of their member counties to understand this problem better. So to date, that consultant has driven every road in our county and done a physical examination and talked to some people and providers to understand what they can tell of the built infrastructure. The next step will be for us to survey our residents, and the more information we get from them, the better our results will be, and of course, the better it will position us to go get some grant money to continue to build out broadband so that our rural areas will have the service that they need for telemedicine and for rural education and remote work, which quite frankly, that's a brand new economic development area, if you will, one by one, house by house. As more people, more industries are allowing remote work, people can live anywhere and go to work. And so we have a beautiful place and a lot of natural cultural resources. We'd like to make that part of our economic development initiative is encourage people to come here and work from their homes, even if they're employers in Texas or Manhattan, it doesn't matter. We'd like to have the infrastructure in place for them to be able to live here and work. So I'm going to be asking all of you and your colleagues to help in the next step, which will take place maybe beginning in May. We'll be in a position to have our own community survey. It'll be posted on our website. Hopefully, we'll also work with Mike to get it posted on theirs. It'll be on the regional planning board's website. And there'll also be a phone number for people to call in for those who, quite frankly, we're asking people, do you have internet? And if they don't, they don't have access to an online survey. So we're trying to cover all the bases. The important part that you can play as legislators is help us understand and distribute to places in your districts where we can have flyers, posters, handouts. We need to get as much information into people's hands as possible. So they'll go on the website, fill out the survey, or call the number and fill out the survey over the phone. And we'll have a regional planning board, we'll have a dedicated phone line for maybe three, three or four months. Work will be done probably around August. So probably May, June, July is when we're going to be really reaching out higher to all of our residents and trying to get them to complete this information. There's a lot of money out there right now for broadband buildout. It's expensive to run fiber, especially when you get on state roads, believe it or not. The state charges an outrageous fee per foot for you to run fiber in there right of way. So we want to try to get as much money as we can while it's available, and the more information we have, the better we'll be positioned to do that. So I just brought that Jefferson County page as a sample of what we'll be putting up on our website to help explain to people and to inform you guys far enough in advance so that you can be good partners in our outreach effort.
That's great, Dave. I know a number of us have heard that is a very large concern recently, especially with the kids, a lot of them doing school from home, a lot of parents doing work from home. I know I've had a number of high school friends who had moved away and have in the last year moved back to Oswego. They're still working for like, you know, Manhattan or wherever they are from, Texas one of them, but they live in Oswego now. They own houses in Oswego, their families are in Oswego, and it's a really cool opportunity. I completely agree with you. Mary Ellen, I saw your hands up.
Yes, a couple of things. As you were saying, you want us to help you. I think one of the main things is obviously, as you said, the schools, to be able to get those so that the kids can bring them home. Once again, if they're not internet, you can't get through there.
Sure.
Because that is a big one. And the second thing you mentioned with the high amount that the state is charging to run on state land. I know that NISAC right now is doing a resolution to go to the state to say, you're saying we need to have this broadband in rural areas, and yet you're slapping these fees onto the broadband to be able to get the cables through state land. So I do know there is something that we're trying to get that reduced. So hopefully, we'll do something with that, and that should help.
Yeah, I saw a study recently that compared state by state and the impediments that the various states had for trying to help people or discourage people, quite frankly, unintentionally. And New York State was not very well rated in that research. So hopefully, NISAC's efforts will change some of that.
Yes, thank you.
That's great. Yeah, for years, I'll just end by saying, you know, you've always heard, oh, I wish there was something my kid could do and not have to move away to find a job. So I mean, this is kind of putting that on its head and saying, your kid can find a job and still live here. He may have to go away for a little bit, but now there's an opportunity for anybody who wants to, to come back if we can get this infrastructure built out.
Marie?
Dave, or whoever knows the answer, the restrictions on state lands, are these going through park areas or what seems to be the problem?
Well, specifically what I was referring to was a fee that they charge to build out in there right of way along state roads. So not crossing any sensitive lands, swamps, wetlands, parks, just, we want to go down your road where other utilities are attached to poles or go underground. And the number, I wish I wrote it down, but it's an outrageous number that they charge per foot for you to...
It's important that we know that and we communicate that right now. I mean, this should be taken to Albany. This is important.
Yeah, I'll get the number for you.
That's what NISAC is at this point doing. They, we did a resolution at the NISAC conference, and I'm on the agricultural board, and that was one of the ones that they brought up. So we actually have a resolution going to Albany regarding that. Not from here, but from NISAC.
I understand, but I think it has to come from every legislator.
Not a, yeah.
Room in the state and demonstrating our needs. I mean, I find it really confusing.
Yes, you have to do it, but we're going to charge you.
Well, the state's broke, the country's about to be broke.
Yeah.
Brace yourself.
Yeah. I'll get that number and send it to you. If the chairman's okay, I'll send it by email to the committee.
Absolutely, and maybe, Mary Ellen, you could get that, a copy of that resolution. We could look to potentially bring that to the legislature as well. So it's a great idea.
Will do.
Rich?
I think it would always be good to have the parent provider build out sixty mile loop that promises that there are private, private, public standards of the hundred aires dedicated to...
That's a good question.
People are questioning you and what's not.
That's great. Dave, do you have any further information on that? I know we've talked about it a little bit, but I don't know that we've ever actually got that question answered, so.
Yeah, so when we were doing our project, the state had some incentives out for building out broadband and specifically into rural areas. And as we were completing our agreement and building out that loop, the state changed how they were going to distribute those funds. And instead of making it a competitive resource for anybody who wanted to build out an infrastructure, they chose to give money to the majors providers, so Verizon, Time Warner, Spectrum, whoever they were at the time, AT&amp;T. So people who were already in the business and had infrastructure in place were given big pots of money and with the guarantee that they would build out their infrastructure. So what they've done, and you can get a report to show exactly what's happened in that time period in your area, what a lot of counties have done, and the North Country did a study, and they found that, I won't name a provider right now, but this one major provider that many of us are familiar with showed a road where they added new customers, and that was in their report to the state. Well, lo and behold, the infrastructure was already there, they just got a new customer on that existing line and counted that as buildout. So they weren't very honest and forthcoming in their efforts, and the money that should have been available to companies like our partner was given to these guys with a promise that they were going to expand, and they really haven't, and they've been taking a task on that. So right now, no one's using our hundred line, our hundred strands because there weren't funds available for companies like ours to access it. But it's still possible to do that, and it's still available. And actually, I've had conversations with our partner about, you know, what would it take? So we have this sixty mile loop, and we serve most of our facilities, but not all, like we don't get up to Richland and the facility's up there, the courthouse. So I said, give me some numbers based on road miles. What would it take to go to do a complete buildout to make sure that there was fiber down every road within that sixty mile loop? That's a good number to have, but a lot of those people already are served. So that includes the city of Fulton, the city of Oswego, but it also includes towns and villages, Mexico and other, New Haven, right? And then I said, well, if we get outside of that loop, but within the county, let's say five miles, so we're not trying to get everything all at once, what would that cost be? So I have a number to do that. And then like stage three, what would it cost to do the rest? So the really rural and more distant parts, Sandy Creek, Williamstown, Redfield, you know. So we have kind of a strategy for buildout, and we know some rough numbers. What we don't have is the money to do that. And there's a lot of different ways we could do it. This study that we're doing with the regional planning board and the survey that we're doing, it's going to help us make our case better, go get those funds, whether we build out with that partner or somebody else.
That's great, Dave. Marie?
Would it be possible for us to garner help, say, from Claudia Tenney? Craft a letter from this legislature, putting forth our issues and problems?
Yeah, and I know that this, this study is the first step in outlining the need. I know I had talks with Director Turner about that, so.
Or play wide. This has been a long...
Right. Dave, I don't know if, because I know that you had talked about some federal sources of funds from state sources of funds. We would absolutely need the, and Claudia Tenney would make sense, that's, a lot of that's her district, so it's a good point.
So one of the other things, and I know it's not like immediate, but once our, our work is done in August, the company, the consultant that's doing that work, part of their, part of the regional planning board's agreement with them is that they will help prepare applications for those federal funds where a county expresses some commitment. So for example, I'm just going to make, make up a number. Let's say we chose what I described earlier as kind of step two, everything outside the loop within five miles and staying within the county. That's maybe a $20 million project. So if the federal money, and right now it's like seventy-five, twenty-five for the, for the big pot of money, there's rumors that it might go to like fifteen, you know, instead of twenty-five percent, fifteen or ten percent local match. So if the county, for Oswego County at that time, said, all right, we want to take on a $20 million project, so we're going to commit ten percent, you know, we, we have $2 million in a project scheduled to match the $18 million we're asking from the feds. They would then help prepare all those applications for us and guide us through the process. So it's a good agreement that we have with the regional planning board, and I hope that we can take advantage of it. USDA has a lot of money, and there's talk of more being on the table. And hopefully, by the end of the summer, if you're serious about being involved in, in some of that growth, there'll be an opportunity for us.
That's great. That's great. Thank you, Dave. Anybody else for Dave on that? If not, do you have any more updates, Dave?
Yeah, so the other thing that I gave you, you know, we talk a lot in, in the past when we were meeting regularly, I'd talk a lot about what's Tourism Office doing because they're kind of the most visible and active. And I've had questions over the years, well, you know, what do you, what do you planners do? What the heck's a planner and what do they do? You know, and we have a couple, and we never hear about them. So I asked actually our, the newest member of our staff, Tim Kenechi, to put a little report together about some of the things that he works on. So one of our responsibilities under general municipal law in New York State is to help local municipalities review their land use regulations and keep them consistent with not just state laws, but with their own local code. And certain things get sent to us if they meet specific criteria, and we review them and help guide the local municipalities in their efforts. This is just a brief report, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing with you, but you can read it, and it goes by referrals by municipality. So you can see who was active in 2020. The city of Oswego was the most, and actually, the village of Palasguy was the most active. And then he did a little breakdown by months and the types of actions, so how many variances, how many special use permits, site plan reviews, things like that. It's just a sampling of one of the things that he works on. And then the last page, because there've been questions from time to time about zoning, if you will, or land use regulation, did a little breakdown for you about all the municipalities and the types of land use regulations that they have, and some specifics within their various codes. Not everybody has zoning officially, but most everybody has some kind of land use regulation, and that's a little chart to help you better understand what they each have.
Thanks, Dave. This is great. I know, actually, we've had a lot of discussion about this, so this is, this is invaluable. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay, so then briefly, just the tourism, or I'm sorry, Public Information Office, last year was a really busy year for them. As an example, in 2019, they put out 282 press releases. In 2020, they put out 600 into press releases. So almost three times what they would do in a normal year. And of those 600, just under 400 were COVID related. So you can see how much that that pandemic added to our workload for just those two people. So far this year, 71 in two months, and of those 71, 55 of them had been COVID related. So it's a significant increase in, in their daily work for the public information staff. And also, let's see, we are working with the Tocqueo Commission to do economic impact study for snowmobiling in the various counties that they represent. And Operation Oswego County was a partner, or the IDA, right? IDA helped support that financially. So that, that's come along pretty well also. Also, we help municipalities a lot. I talked about the 239 reviews, but we do a lot of other things as well. Right now, one of my planners is working village of Mex, village and town of Mexico. They're trying to redo their comprehensive plans, and they're doing it together. We have proposed to help them with various pieces, but just on the sections to a comprehensive plan, a lot of it's documented and expressed graph by various maps. So in their effort, there's 62 different maps, 50 of those we've completed already. And there are things like soil, soil studies, sewer districts, assessed value, wellheads, watersheds, natural gas distribution, electrical capacity, and the typical things like households and population density and things like that. So we're also working with the town of Granby, and we've done several things with them, some mapping, water districts, sewer districts, and Oswego County Land Bank. We keep them up to date with a map on all their projects. So we're, we're out there in various places, people every day and different types, but But two major things were the land, land use regulation and then comprehensive plan and other types of work going on all the time. We just did a review of proposed solar legislation, I think, for the town of Richland, I think it was. So keeps, keeps, keeps those folks busy. And then, if you recall, last year, we had a grant program to help veterans who lived in old mobile homes move out of those and, and get into a new house. Because of the limited timeframe, we didn't use all the money. The state opened up a door for us to repurpose that and help people who were having trouble paying rent and avoid evictions later when the, when the moratorium's lifted. So that was approved with your support. And to date, the project's closed. We're still getting our reimbursements, but we serve one hundred and twenty-four tenants and seventy-one different landlords in that program. And that's a little snapshot of what we've been up to since the last time we met. And it's good to have you all back.
Dave, thank you very much. That's, that's excellent. I, I'm encouraged to see the partnership with the local municipalities. I know we've talked about that quite a bit over the last two years. And so I'm really encouraged to hear they're reaching out, you guys are helping them. I've got a question from Ed and then phone from Marie.
Yeah, Dave.
If I could remind you to speak into the microphone, we did get a message that they're having trouble hearing us, so.
Dave, first, I'd like to thank you and your, your group for the courtesy of copying the thirty-nine reviews and keeping us informed of requests from our areas of projects that are going on so that we can be up to date on that. And, and I understand and realize that your department is excellent advisory. You have no authority when it comes to the zoning laws and stuff. But I think your professionalism from the department and the consistent message that goes along with how we're trying to grow Oswego County is important. But I, I, I am, I'm, I'm concerned and one to see such a, such a small request from so many areas, particularly areas that don't have planning and zoning. I would hope and encourage my fellow legislators to encourage their, their towns and villages to utilize them more, particularly if they don't have zoning. And the other part of question for you is the recommendations that are made. Is, is there a mechanism to follow up on those? Because I see quite often, Tim will recommend things and sometimes I've seen where those haven't been answered or followed up. Not, not that the owner should be on you. I would hope they would come back and answer your, or address your recommendation. So if you could maybe just touch base on that a little?
Yeah, so thanks. The, the state didn't put much teeth into that section of general municipal law. They do require that municipalities who have land use regulations and, and have proposals that meet certain criteria, for example, is it on a state or county road? Is it next to historic structure? Is it in an agricultural district? There's criteria. If, if a project meets that criteria, they're required to send it to us for our review and comments. The municipality is not required to take our advice, but they are required to respond to us that they're not going to. That doesn't happen very often. It's a simple majority vote at the local board level to say, we're going to override the county's recommendation and do what we want instead. They're supposed to send us that resolution that says, thanks for your help. We chose not to accept it. Here's what the, the planning board did instead. But we don't have any mechanism to say, we never heard back from you and now you're in trouble. The only, the only downside to them, the localities not following the letter of the law, is that if something was approved and there was a problem later where someone said, I don't like what you did, I don't like what you approved, there's a window of opportunity for somebody to file, to file an Article seventy-eight challenge to the approval. And then that could tie up that project in court for, for quite some time. Same thing if they don't ask us for a qualifying project for our opinion. If they never send it to us, that Article seventy-eight option is open to opponents of the project as well. But that's really the only enforcement that, that's in that part of the law. And we don't really have any control over that piece.
Thank you.
Marie?
Dave, my question goes back to money's taking earned landlords' money.
Right.
How in the world do people have problems paying rent with increased unemployment, DSS, HUD, and so many various agencies actually in our area? Most people make more money on unemployment. I had people having problems coming back to work because they were getting the additional money. And I just, it, it confounds me to think about this. I believe this was born in New York City where rents are enormous and if people are evicted, you can be homeless, downpaying them if it's a big deal to move or be evicted. I understand that. But landlords I talked to told me that people just thought they didn't have to pay. And I just, I just was very disappointed in that, that it went. I just don't know, I just don't get where there was a lack of money for any of it.
Yeah, so I can't answer your question specifically, but I can tell you, anecdotally, I'm a landlord. I, I own a duplex. My tenant right now is employed at one of the nuclear plants. And quite frankly, my wife and I each month wonder if he's going to pay. Because people right now with the moratorium on evictions can just choose not to pay. And there's nothing that, that you can do. Well, you can, but we can't evict him right now. So there was, there was a, a pretty rigorous qualification regimen to go through. I can tell you, of those seven, one hundred and twenty-four tenants, we're on our fourteenth application for, for reimbursement. There's, there's a lot of information we have to supply to the state for each one of those people that were assisted. And we're in our, going into our third month of preparing all of that follow-up documentation to, to get that money back. So I didn't specifically look at each and every one of those. And I can't tell you what, what the reasonings were for, for any of them. But I know it, it was a lot of work to, to qualify each tenant that got assistance.
Go ahead, Marie.
Hey, I would love to see that list. And Rich, my question's kind of directed at you. If participants in this program for rent, you know, the landlord is getting paid, any of that tenant who defaulted, if they were on DSS, for example, or HUD, or any other agency that was paying money, those agencies in fact should be paid back? Am I right or wrong on that, Rich?
Rich, if you could speak into the microphone, they had trouble hearing you last time.
You have to move to another desk. Well, they can't hear us.
I'd have to look into that. I don't know if that is indeed the, the case.
My, my understanding was that, yeah, we, we, when we, at least when we first initially talked about this, the discussion was that it would not also cross-fund with HUD, HUD-funded projects. Is that accurate, Dave?
If you were receiving housing assistance, you were not eligible to participate in this program. So I can't answer your question specifically about whether they were getting food stamps or medical assistance. But I can tell you, if you were receiving housing assistance, you were not eligible.
And Dave, I believe the funds were, were reimbursed directly to the landlord. Is that correct? At least that was the, the original discussion. So you wouldn't have people at least double-dipping?
Right.
The money went right to the landlord, which was at least an encouraging piece of that part.
Or we still pay people rent with taxpayer money, less than money. And my question is, is it legal? Do they need, do those agencies and staff need to be paid back? And I would really like to see the list. And what forms of any type of reimbursement that tenant was on?
There are restrictions on disclosure of recipients of public assistance under Social Services Law. Very few people can see who receives public assistance.
Well, we don't need names, but somebody should be able to look at this list because we're giving them money. What about our rights here?
The, Dave was saying that Section eight of our program qualifies for this. If someone's on food stamps and this is in lieu of other housing assistance that would receive DSS, that's one scenario. Another would be that it could disqualify them from DSS outside income. I would hope that was that, that was known. As I said, they have to look into it.
What about New York State unemployment as well, Liz?
You know, actually, we, we did talk about that during the application process. They may have the answer to that. My understanding, Dave, and I don't know if you off the top of your head, but my understanding was that those items that would disqualify you would actually have, you couldn't have that overlap. Because we definitely talked about this in the original application process. So I, we may have those answers. We could find that. Unless it was specifically excluded, and I think there was some discussion about that. So we might just need to get that information.
Yeah, and all sources of income within the household, not just the applicant or the person who signed the lease. So I'm happy to share with you the application and the criteria. But I don't, as Rich said, I don't know if we can share an individual person's response.
But I, I think if the process, if the process specifically excludes something, then it will, it will answer Marie's question. I think if it doesn't, that would be maybe the question is, then, then what? If, if it should have and didn't, then what? Exactly. No, it makes sense. It's a good question.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't come prepared to debate the policy or the program. I just wanted to share with you that we were able to bring, you know, that money back into the county and, and help those landlords during this time.
Well, I mean, I'm not looking at this as a debate, Dave.
No, no.
I just, this money needs to be accounted for. And what was the total?
The...
Total disbursement?
Yeah, I don't have that, but I can get that for you. I'm happy to.
This is a program that was originally signed by Housing for Veterans that did not...
So I want to clarify, I want to clarify that. Yeah, so the, the original program was a, a housing program. And we had a really, there wasn't a, a lot of money there and we had a short time to spend it. And so in order to narrow the group and get focused on how we got rid of that money, we chose to make it available only to veterans. It wasn't a state program for veterans. We said, we got a small amount of money, who, who do we want to help? And, and how do we do this? And it was our, our option to make veterans one of the criteria to be eligible. As it turned out, within the time period that we had available, there weren't as many eligible veterans who wanted this service or who need, needed it. And then at the end, we found ourselves in the pandemic and the state said, we have several programs that there's money left over in, in places around the state. And we want to use that somehow for pandemic support. And so, for example, for HUD funds, the state went to HUD and said, originally, you gave us this money to do X, Y, and Z. We have some leftover. This is what we want to do with that leftover. And HUD said, okay. So, you know, we didn't have control on the second part like we did on the first part. Someone else designed the criteria for the second part.
My concern is double-dipping.
Yep, I, I understand. And like I said, I think if I get you the application and the list of qualifying criteria, that may answer some of your concerns. Sure.
Okay. And actually, it, it's, it's a great discussion point, Dave. Even if you want, maybe send it to the whole committee, I think that'd be helpful for all of us. I'm, I'm very interested as well. Unfortunately, sometimes the, the double-dipping is, is allowable under state law. And there's very little we can do about it. And I think that's the difficult piece is if the application process specifically excludes folks who are already receiving, that's good. If they create the application rules, which under this project, they pretty much did, and they allow for it, unfortunately, we are never allowed to be more strict than the state is with their money. That's the difficult piece. So that'd be very helpful if you could put that together for us, Dave, or have someone send it around.
Sure.
All right, great. Any other questions for Dave? Again, thank you for all the work your office has been doing. I, I know we've been seeing those updates every day as well as seeing the work done by the planning group. I appreciate that. So, thank you. Okay, if nothing else, now, we do have Oswego County Soil and Water Board appointments that we need to do. Is that just a, we have to vote on that? Is there no resolution, right? Is there a resolution? Okay. Okay. So just, so we're, we're looking at a reappointment of, I believe it's three members. Three members, two of which are, are legislators. It's Linda Lockwood and Marianne Chesbrough. And the third, who's the third? I'm so sorry. Andy Torival. So we just, I need a motion then? Yes? Okay, I'll look for a motion. All right, thank you. Do I have a second? Ed, thank you so much. Any discussion? Again, reappointments on the board? Okay, are you all abstaining? Vote? Yeah, I'm going to, we're going to vote on the slate of all three. That's correct, the reappointment. No discussion? I'll look for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? One abstention? Noted?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you so much. Outside of that, I know we do have folks from Operation Oswego County. Ellen or Mike, would either of you like to give an update? You, you don't need to, again, we are kind of streamlining these meetings and you do give us updates on a monthly basis, which we very much appreciate. But I want to give you an opportunity, if there's anything you'd like to bring forward, feel free. Oh, did you come right up to the microphone, Mike, if you could?
To receive the January EDAR exit report. The February one is in progress. That will be out to you within mid-February. We've been doing this now for the past four or five months. And that's our adopted policy on the board to get the EDAR out the fifteenth of the following month of the, of the report. So, so you're, in the past, I've been coming in and I've been updating you on things. Well, you're getting it directly in hard copy format. But if anybody got any questions about anything on the January one, feel free to ask.
Great, thank you, Mike. And I, I do want to thank you folks, Operation Oswego County, as a reminder to the legislature and this committee, there has been a partnership, obviously for many years, but specifically in the, in the events with the pandemic. Operation Oswego County has, has moved a, a large amount of money through partnership with the IDA to fund emergency loans to our local businesses as well, with very low interest rates, if any at all, depending on when they were paid off. And I do know that there are still some funds available. I mean, now, obviously, we're seeing some encouraging numbers and we're hoping that we are on our way out of this. But just to remind businesses in your municipalities that if they do need that fund, they are still available. Application is through Operation Oswego County's office. I believe that the application might even be on the website. I think that's true, so. I think that's true, so.
We can say that that is a positive note, that the activity is being reduced. So that's a good thing.
Yes, that's right. Morris?
She had her hand up.
Okay, Mary Ellen.
A couple of things. First, I did want to say thank you. Those reports coming in have been very timely, much different than in the past. Really, really appreciate them. And I do have a question about, one of the things that you had in the January was that you have interest in someone who's brought up for meat processing. And I wanted to know, is that going ahead? Because I've had a lot of people who don't have anything locally, and I'm just wondering what is the status of that.
That, that project by definition is still preliminary. There's been inquiries about a possible location. That hasn't been determined yet. The financing for it, to the best of my knowledge, isn't in place at this point in time, but it's still an active project, but it's not an imminent.
Now, is it, in the processing, is it the hole where they have a kill floor or is it just a butcher?
Uh, well, they're talking about just processing, not.
Not a kill floor?
I don't think so because the size of the building they're looking for is not that large.
Okay. See, that's really what we need is the actual killing of the animal because we have to go miles now in order, out of the county. There is nothing around the area for that. So I was just kind of curious as to if that was it.
Sometimes people don't like to hear the word kill.
I know, I know. I know little flowers and butterflies and, yeah, we have little hamsters.
Project that was looking at Scruple, yeah.
Yeah. No, the big one went down, but you, we used to have Ives and they had a kill floor and that was, that was good. Now that they only do deer. And so as they say, they do deer, but that's only during deer season. So they've got the facilities for it. If someone would go in there and use it for the rest of the year, because your dairies are really becoming much more picking up with the beef and having to ship them all out of the county, it's becoming a real problem.
I'll review that project when I get back and tell you whether or not, because we got a kind of preliminary draft business plan, whether or not that is included or not.
Thank you.
That's great. David, Dave, you raised your hand. Do you have something on that topic there?
Yeah, interesting dynamic in that you've seen, we've all seen a pretty significant growth in solar.
Dave, if you could, I'm sorry, folks at home can't hear, that's all.
So over, over the last few years, we've seen a lot of growth in, in solar projects throughout New York and in Sugo County. We certainly had our share. And there's kind of a new initiative that's growing and with some assistance from Cornell. The sheep industry is being bolstered by solar development because sheep ranchers now are bringing their flocks to these big solar farms to graze and control the weed growth around the solar and keep the maintenance costs down. Problem the sheep ranchers have is eventually you have to do something with the sheep. And for them to take them to Pennsylvania, New Jersey, or even farther in some cases to a certified slaughterhouse, it makes it uneconomic for that end of the business. So we used to think, well, we need beef, beef, beef and dairy. That was our big problem with a lack of a slaughterhouse. But now lamb, sheep is part of that mix. And so the need for that facility, as a result of the growth of the solar industry, believe it or not, the need for a slaughterhouse is growing.
Also, our meat goat industry is increasing in the state as well as Sugo County. So we've got a lot of meat goats.
Wow. Good information. Morris, go ahead then.
Yeah, Mike, I would like to give them, you've got a report on our building at the Nestle Park. The building that you plan on Operation Sugo County is going to be putting at the Nestle site?
At the Nestle site? Yes. Well, right now, we're still in a limbo state from the standpoint, we're still waiting. We've had one state grant approved through the CFA process that has been approved. We're still waiting. Another component of that is the DRI application, which right now we don't know when the state is going to finalize and select the projects that will be, we're in the priority list of projects, but that's a big piece of that project. We bought the site. We control this, the IDA controls the site. So we're still waiting to hear back from the state on that other piece of funding.
Great, thank you. Morris, did you?
The expansion of the industrial park, has that took place?
Well, we're still in a study mode on that. CNS is, is, have just completed one environmental study on that site. There's still a number of things that are still being worked on. We will probably have a presentation on the results of their study at an upcoming IDA meeting pretty soon. They're about 75% finished with their feasibility study, which includes an evaluation of what it would take in terms of cost to build out the infrastructure that would be needed for that 200 plus acres. And so things are moving. We've had a couple of good meetings with the Village of Phoenix and the Town of Scruple in regards to the project. We did get an interesting inquiry the other day that from a real estate firm looking for that property that we would like to acquire to add to the Sugo County Industrial Park for a solar project. That wasn't the, what we were trying to do. So we discouraged them from considering that site as available for a solar project. But then we tried to find a couple of other alternatives.
I didn't know we had that much sun in Sugo County, but maybe.
It's always sunny in Sugo County. All right, that's great information. Thank you so much, Mike. Paul, go ahead.
My, my question's a twofold question. Where do we stand with Addus? And did you know that the other half of that building is going up for sale, Resseli's trying to sell it?
Yep, we are aware that Resseli's building, about $130,000 square feet, is, it has been available for a good while, that facility. But to the best of our knowledge, and sometime this month, mid-month, there's going to be an option for the sale of that building. The balance of the property of the Riverview Business Park, the whole Miller complex, there are and has been some interest in that facility. Addus is in Never Never Land. They, they're not communicating, they're making no effort whatsoever in terms of maintaining the facility, winterizing the facility. So that's, that's a problem and they won't, they won't talk to anybody.
Rich, go ahead.
Regarding Addus, I've had conversations with the Fair Colley, current community director, Eric Gavitt, town school respectively. The municipalities can proceed under 874, which generally law and a painted judgment for the defaulted IDA payment, which I think in some homes, about 600, 700,000. I mean, as chair of that town and school, obviously the largest chair. The statute provides for attorney's fees. The IDA passed a resolution allowing commencement of suit against Addus, recovered the default payments. I've not seen pleadings on that. I have, because the properties are delinquent for water sewer, notwithstanding the IDA agreement for 2023, 21, you're serving an 11A notice on the real property tax law today. I have a copy of that if you would like to see, which prohibits them from dispoiling or removing any fixtures from the property when they become liable for the county tax district. So right now, it's on track for closure because of the water sewer. And then the IDA default payment, more than the, is a return on pay tax. Once the exemption is removed, which the lease is not a combination of record, notwithstanding where formally it's a warrant of tax status, I don't know if that's occurred, so.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Ellen? Thank you, Mike.
I just want to take a turn too and kind of tag onto what you were saying, Mr. Stoll about working jointly with the IDA, Operation Sugo County, for a very thorough review of what was needed for folks. And I wanted to speak to the concept of double dipping. We even went so far as to make sure that anybody who had received funds from other entities, whether it be the city of Sugo, city of Fulton, or anyplace else, did not receive funds through that particular source because we wanted to make sure we could spread the well. So I think that was really important for people to be aware of the fact that we were looking at as much as we could at the big picture, so.
That's great, thank you.
And I appreciate your acknowledgement of the hard work done by the staff and the community, so thank you.
Thank you. Well, all right, thank you, everyone. Great conversation. Is there anything else for the good that we should discuss? Anything else? Everybody else feels pretty good at this point? Again, great to see everyone. It's good to be back in person a little bit here and getting back to a little bit of normalcy, so I appreciate that. If nothing else, I'll look, I believe that we've hit everything, correct? I think we're good to go. If nothing else, then I will look for the appropriate motion to adjourn. And second, Paul, thank you. All right, everyone. Favor, aye. Have a wonderful rest of your day. Thank you, everyone.